This is the Thursday, November 5th, 2020, meeting of the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And it's been determined the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board will pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format that is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting. A link to the virtual meeting via the way of WebEx, a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available by the way of the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Excuse me. Formal action may be taken at this meeting. Reminder to board members, please mute yourself unless you wish to speak or provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicant's witnesses are finished, at which time the chair will ask the board for a comment. I would ask Mark to read the instructions for public input.
Okay, for those that of the, those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. Press the raise hand button. To use this feature, click on the Participants icon in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, which will open a new Participants window on the right-hand side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon, which will place a small hand icon next to your name in the participation list. Or use the chat function. Either use the default, which is Everyone, or Chat Mark Healy. Do not send the chat message to Christine Woodbury, as she's unable to review messages during the meeting. And do not use the Q&amp;A function, as that section is not checked during the public meeting. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have the opportunity to ask questions or provide comments. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if on the WebEx, if participating via WebEx, please use, please press the lower hand button after you're done speaking. And if calling in, press the star three button, and that'll unraise your hand if you're calling in.
Okay, would you call the roll? Here. Here. We have minutes of the regular meeting, September 3rd, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
I, I so moved.
And there's our second.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes. We also have the Francis D. Parker Memorial Home Incorporated, ZDA 200012. That's one of the resolutions. Is there a motion for that approval?
I moved accept.
Okay.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Move it. I moved it.
Your second.
Yes.
And then Somerset Group Hospitality, ZDA 200011, need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, good.
Okay, I moved it law. Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, under the hearings section of the agenda, Si Data Mandir, ZDA 1900037, preliminary final major site plan with C and D variances in which the applicant wants to construct a 28,970 square foot place of worship at 583 South Middle Bush Road, Somerset, block 36.01, lot 6.03. So agricultural zone has been carried to January 7th, 2021 with no further notification needed. I'm going to assume we got an extension of the deadline for action, which looks like it is November 30th.
Hold on, let's, hold on for a second. Let's, Dan?
Yes.
What I would suggest is, since both Si Data and Data are being moved, Data Bagwana being carried to January 7th, that we do the notice once for both, rather than having to read all of this into the record twice. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Just indicate the separate actions that are being moved to January the 7th. I believe Mr. Lanford's on.
Yeah, I think Mr. Lanford wanted to, to, I think you had suggested Mr. Lanford speak with respect to Data Bagwana?
That's correct. And we can also ask him about the time, the extension for approval for Mandir as well while we have him on the record. Otherwise, we could do a written extension will be, will be sufficient, but since we have him here tonight, we can do it orally on the record.
I'm going to bring him in as a panelist.
Are you there, Mr. Lanford?
I am here.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of both Si Data and Data Bagwana. First of all, with respect to the Si Data matter, which was referenced by you earlier, and you indicated that that matter would be carried to January 7th, 2021, I am hereby authorized to grant to the board an extension of time within which to act in this matter through February 28th, 2021.
Okay, and then we were changing the agenda to address Data Bagwana, Vignan Institute.
Okay.
Let me read the rest of it for the people that are probably out there, so they know they have the right one. ZDA 190040, conditional D3 use variance, C variance, and site plan, which the applicant's asking to construct a 21,083 square foot place of worship with parking lot, five-foot monument sign at 60 South Middle Bush Road, Somerset, block 3702, lot 45, 46.03, and the agricultural zone. This was carried from October 15th. Mr. Lanford wishes to communicate some information.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. When you made your opening comments this evening, you had made a statement that the available materials for the various applications are available or were available on the township website. It appears that through some inadvertence, the township website did not carry for a certain period of time copies of all of the plans and reports and other relevant materials for this matter on their website, and thus were not available to be viewed by the members of the public. We had a conference call today between myself, the two attorneys representing the objectors, and your board attorney. We reviewed the COVID regulations regarding public hearings, and it is my opinion that the fact that the reports and plans were not on the website for a period of time may lead a member of the public to not have had the ability to review those reports prior to the hearing, which they are entitled to. They don't want to be put in a position that if this matter ever went to court a year or two down the road, some judge is going to say that the notice was defective and then send everything back to the board to have this matter reheared again. So I think the interest of safety and caution that this matter should be carried to the January 17th meeting, at which time we will continue presenting our testimony in this matter.
Okay, then that will extend that deadline also, right?
I will grant the board an extension of time through February 28th, 2021 in that matter also.
Okay, that sounds good. Is there any, anything else we need to tie up for that matter?
Well, yeah, I think we should, we should technically read the, the link and the, and the call-in number and access code into the record. So I'm going to ask Christine to do that.
can also contact Christine Woodbury via email at christine c h r i, c h r i s t i n e dot woodbury w o o d b u r y at franklin nj dot gov, or you can call her at 732-873-2500, extension 6215, and she'll be happy to give you the contact info, or the WebEx and the call-in number.
Okay, thank you. We move on now to the other two applications. William and Rubai Chehi, ZDA 2000008, C variance in which the applicant wishes or seeks to construct a one-story addition to the reedern right side of the existing house, 140 Runyon Avenue, Somerset, block 266, lot 19, in the R7 zone. Is the applicant present and is the applicant being represented or representing themselves?
I believe they're representing themselves. Okay, so unmuted.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear us, or we can hear you?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yep, we can hear you. So we're going to ask the board attorney to swear you out. Are there going to be one or two people speaking?
Two.
Two.
That's been a while.
All right, so Dan, I'll, I'll give it over to you to swear them in.
Sure. Sir, we'll swear you in individually, so wherever you are, please raise, please raise your right hand.
William.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
First, please state your name individually and spell your last.
William Chehi, C S E H I.
Now, the madam on the phone as well.
My name is Ruby, R U B Y E. My last name is Chehi, C as in Charles, S E H I.
Thank you both.
Okay, would, whoever the lead person is, would you just give us a brief description what you're planning to do?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Construction-wise would be, there's a breezeway at, at the house. The breezeway would be demolished, the garage was demolished. The breezeway would be turned into a kitchen, and the garage would be a two-car garage, one in front of the other. And the reason why we're asking for a variance to the side of the house is the stoop or steps to get into the house would be from the garage. So the steps would be about, actually about three feet wide, so we're trying to extend the garage three feet to the property line. And the front porch, also add a, a front porch, and also on, on the backside of the house to extend the building to the gutter, gutter, uh, fascia, the fascia board. And that's it.
Do board members have any, any questions?
Well, I'll just indicate to the board that the, the application was spelled out for you in the TRC report, which included the exhibit that's in front of you right now that shows basically in gray the areas of, it's a one-story house, and there, these are one-story additions to the house. So it shows in gray basically the areas that, that the applicant just described, and then it shows in the front of the house a proposed covered porch. There are, there are a number of variances that are proposed. Front yard setback, 25 feet required, 18.1 proposed. Side yard, eight feet required, 6.2 proposed. Total side yard of 20, 15.7 proposed. Lot coverage, 20% permitted, 28.38 proposed. And impervious coverage, 30% permitted, 33.59 proposed.
Have you discussed this with your neighbors?
We have. And they're all very excited for us.
Christine, you have a chance to put up, sir, do you have this handy?
Anybody, anyone else have a question? Did you, our only question I would have is, did you, other potential plans that might eliminate some of the variances?
As, as in, as in what? If, so the side variance or the front variance?
I think what you're doing is minimal. I don't know, looking at the plan and the property and everything.
What?
What you could do differently, other than make everything smaller, which might not make it as useful.
Go to the plan.
It would defeat the purpose.
You would understand if this were approved, just about anything else that you might want to do, including a storage shed, would probably need a, an approval.
Understandable. That's the, actually with the two, two cars facing each other, that would only be like actually in the, in the wintertime. And other than that, the extension to the garage would actually be like a craft area until we needed, until we needed the, to use it for the two cars.
Okay, any, any other questions from the board?
I just have a, a brief question, Mr. Chairman. How many steps go down into the garage? Because I'm trying to figure out what.
It'll probably be about either two or three, three steps.
Okay, and those two or three steps that go into the garage are really why the garage then has to extend further towards the side yard?
Yes.
You need the, you need the ingress and egress from the existing home into the garage area?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
And just so, the board, again, this was in your TRC report, but these are the proposed elevations showing.
I would say, if there are no other questions, let's open to the public and see if anybody has any comments.
Okay, I don't, I don't see anybody with a raised hand, but I think what I'll do is I'm going to, so for everybody listening in, I'm going to unmute all of the callers, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to give about three seconds for somebody to speak up if they have a question on this application on, on, at 140 Runyon. Okay, do any callers have any questions on this application at 140 Runyon? I'm hearing nothing. I'm going to mute.
Okay, then let's close to the public. If there aren't any other comments from the board or questions, we'll entertain a motion.
I, I, I move to, to grant this, this variance for ZDA 20-00008.
I'll sec.
Okay, poll the board.
Yes.
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 Yes, good luck with it. I think it's a nice enhancement for the house in spite of the variance. Next, application, Catherine Cunningham, ZDA 200018, C variance in which the applicant seeks to construct an in-ground and patio, in-ground pool and patio to the rear of the existing house, 6 Tamarack Road, Somerset, lot 364, lot 17, R20 zone. Do we have the applicant, and are they, again, representing themselves, or do they have representation? I've got you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
It's Catherine Cunningham, C U N N I N G H A M.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, could you just briefly give a description of what you were planning to do?
I'm like an in-ground pool in the backyard. I just unfortunately because of the existing house, I'd have to fill the variances because when I bought it, it was already like 25% coverage. And of course, I'm not like the patio around the pool as well.
Okay. Is, is the plan getting put up on the screen? Okay, just, just a moment. Okay, you still there, Mrs. Cunningham?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, the, the rear yard setback back involves the backyard backing on the Kennedy Boulevard, right? That's where the pool will go?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And is there any, any way, any adjustments could be made in terms of the side yard?
Unfortunately, if you, like my house kind of juts out behind the garage. So if I, I can't really bring it too much closer without getting too close to that part and not being able to walk, there won't be enough walkway.
I see. And if you moved it back, it would further go closer to Kennedy Boulevard?
Yeah.
Again, the impervious coverage is over. You said, it says on here you're removing part of the patio?
Yeah, I have an existing paper patio currently. And even the house itself, according to this plan here, says that I'm already at 25%. So technically, I wouldn't be able to build anything with the way the house is now.
Okay, any board questions?
Yes. Have you talked to your neighbor? I'm troubled by how close the pool comes to the side yard property line.
I'm sorry? I can hardly hear you.
I said I was troubled by how close the pool comes to the side yard property line. And I'm wondering if you've spoken to your neighbor about it?
Oh, yeah, they're aware. They're actually kind of excited for future pool parties.
Sorry?
I said they're actually kind of excited for future pool parties. They're aware.
Okay, because basically that's my only problem with it.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may. This is in the R20 Zone, which permits building on 20,000 square foot lots. The applicant's lot is 15,000 square feet, so it's an undersized lot, which is in line with what the applicant just testified to as to the impervious already being at 25%. And then the front yard with the chairman, you touched on it being JFK Boulevard. I have a question for the applicant. Along John F. Kennedy Boulevard to the rear of your property, is there landscaping?
Uh, just grass.
Just grass. Are there any trees between your property and JFK, JFK Boulevard?
There's several, maybe like five or six.
Anybody standing on John F. Kennedy Boulevard would be able to be, to see into your backyard?
No.
Okay.
I haven't seen it as well.
Is there anything along the side yard between the proposed pool, where you're requesting the variance and the neighboring property?
Uh, just a fence.
How high is that fence roughly?
Six feet.
Six-foot-high fence. Is there any landscaping along that line?
No.
Are you proposing any landscaping?
Not at this time.
And you said the reason why you, you have to be in that location is because your house jets out on the other side?
That's correct.
Is there anything else preventing you from moving the patio area to behind that jet, jet-out portion and moving the pool five feet over?
I'm sorry? You, you cut out for a second.
Is there anything preventing you from putting the patio area behind that little bump out?
Uh, like adding to the patio, you mean, behind it?
Correct. If you were to slide the pool over five feet, but then extend the patio to behind that bump out.
Uh, I think I'd still have the problem of like too close to the house, I would think. Because then it's a smaller space.
Okay, so just to be clear, your, your one variance is for your side yard setback to your 10 feet off the property line and you need to be 15 feet off the property line. So that's why I ask if there's anything preventing you from sliding the pool over five feet and extending that patio area to behind the bump out of the house?
Well, I, I guess that I'm not sure because I think that would be too small of a space for a walkway, et cetera, as when you come out, because the back door is right there. So it'd be a very narrow, I would think, to come out.
Okay, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Any other board questions? If not, let's open to the public. Mark? Okay, any other board questions, comments, suggestions or motions?
I move approval of this application of Catherine C Cunningham, ZBA 20-00018 at 6 Tamarack Road in Somerset.
I second.
Okay, poll the board.
Yes.
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 Uh, we're still able to adjourn, right? Okay, then we can adjourn this evening to, on a customly brief meeting. I think we all probably appreciate that. Everybody stay safe and we'll see you the next time.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.